All right, I'd like to call to order the Town of East Troy Planning Commission for the month of February. Like the record to show that all the commissions are present with the exception of Commissioner Gordon, who is replaced by Commissioner Russell. How we work is we will work on a split meeting format and as an informational meeting, where we will gather our information on any applicant. What we will do is have the applicant come up, make their presentation to the board. We will have any questions from the commission to the applicant. They will sit down, we will then open it up to the audience after that, and we would have anybody in the audience who likes to speak in favor of the proposal, and then anybody who would like to speak against the proposal, and then if necessary, a short rebuttal from the applicant. When we do that is we adjourn for two weeks, we come back, and we have our decision-making meeting in two weeks. That being said, that's not by ordinance, so if we feel it's straightforward and we could make a decision tonight, we would make it tonight. First item on the agenda is to review and approve the planning commission minutes from December fourth as well as the eighteenth. Anybody see any issue with the minutes?
Yeah, I think there was a typo in the minutes for December fourth. I wanted to read something to Jan earlier. Item four, under top of the third page, if this request would issue the reason and if the rule should be affect the reason. Not my own type of.
Okay.
Other than that, would they issue it?
Anybody else have any concern with the minutes? I would take a motion to approve with the amended type of draft put there.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December fourth and to separate the correction order.
Well, we have a motion, we have a motion, do we have a second? A second in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is rezoned slash conditional use. Sent back to the, this is not sent back to the planning commission. It's a conditional use. West Rod College Industries, N eight eight two H Strangers Bridge Road, parcel P E T one eight zero 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 six eight.
Good evening. I'm a couple days into a good cold, so if I'm not well caught, there's a night. All right, we started off back on June sixth in front of this board here, and we took up the rezon to this property here. And ten meetings later, and with the approval of the full county board and the majority of the town board and the unanimous decision at the Walworth County CCA Board, subsequently the full county board, we now have the property in C two. Here is my declaration page, many ordinance showing that the property is C two now.
Okay.
So, so we're coming back now, and we're doing the conditional use portion of this. And leading up to this point right here, I've had about five or six meetings, lengthy meetings with both Darren Schlenke and Kate Basins at Walworth County. And we went over everything in great detail, what is allowed, what isn't allowed, what they expect to do, what they don't expect to do. And in doing so, I was able to have-
Sorry, can I interrupt real quick? I apologize. I didn't get Commissioner Jan or he gave a chance to say something. He's got an confusion. I apologize, totally my fault.
Given the training on quasi judicial proceedings that I received in January from Jim Mills, it was under advisory that I recuse myself from this because it is a conditional use. So I am recusing myself from the planning commission vote. Thanks. All right, sorry about that.
No problem. So subsequently after several meetings out of the county with Kate Basins and Darren Schlenke, their zoning officer, I was able to have my application, which was turned in in senior packet with Kate's initial on there. So basically, everything that we're trying to do here today is compliant with what's in the county zoning book. So on this conditional use, I am going to comply to all federal, state, and local laws and ordinances that relate to granting of this conditional use. So I want to read something here to the board. This is an Act sixty seven memo. And basically, it says, "The act requires a city, village, town, or county to grant conditional use permit. If an applicant meets or agrees to meet, which I have and I will, and I do all the requirements and conditions specified, relevant ordinance, or imposed by the relevant zoning board. Any such conditions must be related to the purpose of the ordinance and based on substantial evidence. In addition, the act requires those requirements and conditions to be reasonable and to be the exact practical measure." So basically, if I agree to adhere to all federal, state, local ordinances, which I do, there's really no reason why this board or the town board or the county board can deny my conditional use. I also have something that I obtained here through open market request. I got this just for two days ago. And Attorney Mills, which is the town attorney, wrote a letter to Michael Cotter. And I'm going to read you that letter here, it's not very long. It's, "Good afternoon, happy two thousand twenty-five. This is Jim Mills to Michael Cotter. I am writing to you as there has been some questions raised about attached rezoned ordinance signed by the county board and clerk on January fourteenth. The county ordinance mentions the GIS system, but there is no language at all that speaks to split zoning or the fact that the C two zoning classification near the water is not being rezoned with C two. Is it possible to add that distinction in an amended ordinance? There is some confusion, as I'm trying to clear up. So any guidance on the sufficiency of the executed ordinance amendment is appreciated. If the C four portion near the water has not been rezoned, I am confused as to how an applicant can run an arena with no water or boats in the portion of C two of the rezon besides the parking, lighting, accessory structures, et cetera. Any clarification would be helpful. The matter comes before the town planning commission on February fifth, two thousand twenty-five. So your prompt attention is appreciated." Second paragraph here, "Second, the town code includes an ordinance that governs marina permits. To obtain a marina permit from the town board, the applicant must file a permit with the town clerk and the Lakeview Management District. As you know, the town does not have its own zoning. Further, case law is clear that the legislative has given shoreline zoning authority to counties, not towns. C Hermans versus City Walworth. Two eighty-six Wisconsin, second, four four nine, seven oh three nine, W two D seven twenty. As cited in O A G dash zero one dash one nine. I know that county defines a marina in its zoning code and also listed as a conditional use allowed in the C two, but I do not see any other regulations of marina. If that is correct statement, do you believe that the county still has jurisdiction to hear this marine applicant? Or is it something relegated to the town? That same town ordinance goes on to state that if it shall not supersede or affect any other more restrictive provision of the municipal code of the Town of East Troy or any other entity with jurisdiction, in parentheses, emphasis added, that would be Walworth County. Some could try to argue that a marina permit and rezon are separate issues. I personally am having a hard time making a distinction between the two. To me, the comparison that one would try to make is like describing the word marina as a noun thing and then also as a verb, operation or use of the property. Because a marina is allowed as a conditional use in the county zoning code, I do not know if the town ordinance regulation that simply requires a permit to be filed with it is sufficient to take the decision-making away from Walworth County. Further, in light of last year's two thousand twenty-three Wisconsin Act two sixty-four, because the Town of East Troy has adopted county zoning and Walworth County Comprehensive Plan and amended that following, do you believe that the town ordinance regarding marina permits has been superseded? Two thousand twenty-three Act two sixty-four, in Attorney General opinion, I cited our catch with the relevance portions of the Town of East Troy Municipal Code. Give me a call if you wish to discuss the same or believe that a meeting is preferable, I'll look forward to your opinion." So then, Michael Cotter writes back to Attorney Mills. And this was on February third, two thousand twenty-five, one forty-three P M. He goes, and everything that I read as Cotter's is going to be in red, and everything that I've read in black is going to be Mills'. So Jim, I will attempt to answer your questions paragraph by paragraph. I'm also copying Darren, Kate, and Nick on this response. If anyone else has something to ask, please chime in. I am writing to you, I am writing to you as there has been some questions raised, this is Mills, about the attached rezoned ordinance signed by the county board chair and the clerk on January fourteenth. The county ordinance mentions the GIS system, but there is no language at all that speaks to the split zoning or the fact that the C four zoning classification near the water is not being rezoned with C two. Is it possible to add that distinction in an amended ordinance? Okay, now this is in red, this is Cotter speaking. The engineer for the application provided a digital file of the area to be rezoned. Often, a surveyor engineer provides a legal description in the case we receive the digital file that we are able to upload into our GIS system. If you look at our GIS system for this parcel, you will see where the zoning line runs and can now understand why you would question this, but we've properly mapped the rezon request. And for note, I did check it today, and the property does have the wetland elimination right along the edge of shore. All right, this is in black, this is Mills. There is some confusion, as I'm trying to clear up. So any guidance on the sufficiency of the executed ordinance amendment is appreciated. If the C four portion near the water has not been rezoned, I am confused as how an applicant can run an arena with no body, with no water or boats in the C two portion of the rezon besides the parking, lighting, and accessory structures, et cetera. Any clarification would be helpful. The matter comes before the town planning commission on February fifth, two thousand twenty-five. So your prompt attention is appreciated." Now, this is in red, this is Cotter answering him. As you indicated, the applicants proposed parking and storage related to the marinas are located in the C two area. This marina discussion is all proposed because the applicant has not appeared before the county zoning agency to discuss his marina application. The C four zoning district allows for hiking, fishing, trapping, hunting, swimming, and boating as a permitted use. So what he says in English is, if you want to walk across the C four to get to the piers, you can get to it in a-
Why don't you just read what he actually said?
Sure, no problem. Okay. In other words, the land for use of the marina is proposed in the C two zoning area. Crossing the C four strip of land to access a pier would be a use allowed under C four. We litigated and lost a similar argument related to the Lauderdale Lakes Aqua Skeeters. The Aqua Skeeters had a walkway and a viewing area for their ski show located in the C four district. I believe they even had bleachers and a trailer located in the C four area, but I don't remember all the specs. Okay, now this is in black, this is Attorney Mills. Second, the town code includes an ordinance that governs marina permits. To obtain a marina permit from the town board, the applicant must file a permit with the town clerk and the Lakeview Management District. As you know, the town does not have its own zoning. Further, case law is clear that the legislature has given shoreline zoning authority to counties, not towns. C Herman versus Walworth, two eighty-six Wisconsin, two D four ninety-nine, seven oh three nine, W two D seven two zero. As cited in O A G dash zero one dash zero one nine, I know that the county defines a marina in its zoning code and also listed as a conditional use allowed in the C two, but I do not see any other regulations of marinas. Now, it's in red, this is Cotter speaking. We do have an additional marina permit. We do not have an additional marina permit or anything like that. The marina would be regulated under the terms of the conditional use. But this is in black, this is Mills. If that is correct statement, do you believe that the county still has jurisdiction to hear this marine application? Or is it something relegated to the town? This is in red now, this is Cotter. Yes, the county holds jurisdiction for a additional use permit related to marinas, and we have not relegated this authority to the town. Now, this is black, this is Mills. That same town ordinance goes on to state that it shall not supersede or affect any other more restrictive provision of the municipal code of the Town of East Troy or any other entity with jurisdiction, emphasis added, that would be Walworth County. Some could try to argue that a marina permit and zoning are separate issues. I personally am having a hard time making a distinction between the two. To me, the comparison is that one could try to make is like describing the word marina as a noun thing and also as a verb, operation or use of the property. Because a marina is allowed as a conditional use in the county zoning book, I do not know if the town ordinance regulation that simply requires a permit to be filed with it is sufficient to take the decision-making away from Walworth County. Now, this is in red, this is Cotter speaking. I do not agree that the decision-making was taken away from Walworth County. And this is Mills in black. Further, in light of last year's two thousand twenty-three Wisconsin's Act two sixty-four, because the Town of East Troy has adopted county zoning and Walworth County Comprehensive Plan and amended that following, do you believe that the town ordinance regarding marina permits has been superseded? This is red, this is Cotter. I cannot speak to the town's ordinance. I know this marina proposal requires a conditional use permit from Walworth County. If the town has the authority to require an additional permit, that is outside of my review. In some cases, the county can't issue a zoning permit, and the town should may have more restrictive requirements. When we issue the zoning permit, the applicant needs to meet the town requirements for a building permit. Maybe the town requires a larger square footage or has a more restrictive height requirement. I cannot think of a specific example in a shoreline area. If you have any further questions, please let me know. Then, yeah, that's it, that's the end of Cotter's letter. So basically, what it addresses is here is a town ordinance right here, and it says that you're required to come to the town board and you're required to go to the management district for a marina permit if you apply for it. Basically, what Cotter explained there is that the jurisdiction wasn't relegated to the town to supersede the county, so the county is the final decision-maker in the conditional use. So I don't think it would be appropriate if this board listened to a bunch of things that are said by the people that want to speak for public comments, because Act sixty-seven doesn't care about what people say. All they care about is you're complying with this book, and everything you're doing is not contrary to what's in this book. That's all I got for now.
Any questions for your, yeah, can, hold on. Yeah, I have a question. So on your flat survey, and it looks like the wetland and the C four zoning, which is that wetland area, bounds the Lakeview Land Fire Area. Do you have any, is there any portion of the parcel that's currently zoned C two that abuts?
I'm going to check for it, put the screenshot, it's written up in GIS. I believe there's not, but I don't want to speak yet. No, according to this right here, the Liddell line, it means the wetland elimination line is north of the ordained high water mark. There's a small gap, five, six, seven feet between the edge of the water and where the wetland elimination line is. So the answer to your question is, there's no portion of the C two property that touches the water.
Okay, and to clarify, so you have a parcel that's split zone, C two and C four, and you're applying for conditional use for a marina, which is allowed under C two zoning?
Mm-hmm.
Is it allowed under C four zoning?
We're not doing it under C four. The use that we're doing is we're asking to boat up a pier there. And a permitted use, if you look in your packet, if I include in your packet, a permitted use in C four is boating and swimming. So if you want to boat or swim in C four, it's a legal activity. So we're not, we're not doing anything that's illegal in C four. Now, if we were doing commercial stuff down in the wetland area, that would be illegal. But we're not doing anything commercially down in a wetland area.
So then, I think I can kind of clarify. He can do all his marina operation on the C two, and he can cross the C four to get to his pier, according to Michael Cotter, the attorney from the county.
And then, I didn't see, your application is pretty minimal. Are you, have you, have you provided us with any information regarding to your hours of operation?
The hours of operation have been explained in great detail at the county. The hours of operation is the same as the marina across the street, they're twenty-four hours a day. We don't do anything in the middle of the night, but there are on occasion where somebody will go out in the middle of the night to go fishing or walleyes or whatever, but generally, we don't have a lot of activity in the middle of the night. But currently, across the street, there is twenty-four hour use for the marina there.
Okay, and days of year?
Every day. Well, obviously, in the winter time, there'd have to be fishing in the middle on the ice, but yeah.
And you, and I'm sorry, and I didn't see any detail, but did you mention, you write off that letter, I didn't see that letter in the packet, so if you could-
No, I just got that letter off Facebook.
Okay, so if we could get a copy of that.
I think Joel has copied it.
I thought it was in the, everybody owns it just now.
So are you, were you planning on constructing any lighting or parking? Or was that just-
We don't plan on changing anything on the property. We're not erecting anything, we're not doing any land disturbing. All we're doing is basically shuffle and paper so that we can park up on top there and we can access the piers that are currently in the water. We're not building or constructing or erecting anything.
Okay. I guess I, chairman, I have a number of other questions. There's a lot of detail that wasn't provided. Typically, we're provided with this number of parking spots they're going to be used, that sort of thing, under sense?
That was provided. It's in the packet, it's eight commercial parking spots. And then it's eight commercial pier spots with two personal pier spots.
Normally, it's all plain, typically, we'll have-
I believe I gave you a copy of the survey that had all the parking, everything on it. I think you must be looking at an odd one there, because I do believe I, let me see if I have that in my packet here. Hold on. That was provided, yeah?
Okay, I think I have it here.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yeah, please. Do you intend to provide, you're willing to launch boats from the property?
Not for the public, no. For my own use, for my own repairs. A lot of times, I'll have a boat that goes out, it comes back, see with smoke and color, and it's not pumping, and that boat's scheduled to go out a day or two later. I may need to pull my own boat out and put it on the shore, put it in the coloring, but I'm not going to be launching boats to the public, no.
How would you do that if there isn't a launch?
I would take a forklift that I own, I'd pick it up and send it out of the water. So nothing would be going into the lake, it would just be picked up and pulled out.
And how many piers do you envision in this marina?
The same amount of piers we have now, it's two. And for the record, I, when I turn in my original application back in two thousand and eight, I do have wharfs along the edge of the pier, edge of the shores. I've never installed the wharfs yet, but they are my original permit, so I may put some wharfs in along the shore, but that's already been permitted for my original application from two thousand and eight.
Wharfs along the shore? I'm not sure.
All right, what a wharf is, a wharf is a landing that's parallel to the shore versus a pier, which is perpendicular to the shore going out there.
And then you state that there's no, in your application, you state there's no change in the previous calculation, which would imply you're not intending to do any paving?
We're not going to do any asphalting, no concrete work, no, no buildings, no.
And your conditional use application was revised in October, included a year-round use of an airboat watercraft?
Yeah. My eventually goal is to get a few ice shays that I can take out and rent for people off that property there. Yeah, and that's what the airboat would come in as, if you have a question of the life or if you want to be able to get it on.
And then the application includes an excerpt from the zoning code with the definition of B three and, which is the waterfront business district, and with the principal use highlighted of boat rental. Why is that included in the application?
I think when I was going through to try to find the definition of marina and what it entailed and the number of slips, that's all I could find in the zoning code. Walworth County is not super clear when it comes to defining of a marina. They have one short little paragraph as they describe it, and I was just trying to put that in there to give you guys an idea when you look at what we're talking about.
Yeah, but the B three, we're not talking about-
No, this property is not B three. The property across the street is a western B three, but this one has no B three associated with it.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Is this a split zone?
I think you could call it a split zone because originally, when the rezon was done, the property, the whole property before was in C four, okay? Now, after the wetland elimination, survey work was turned in and went through the whole process of here, town board, and county, they decided that the portion from the wetland elimination line northward was going to get a new zoning. So there is split zoning, the very edge of the shore is C four, and then the portion from the wetland elimination line going north is now C two.
I have seen that when you have a split zone, the new zone, which would be the C two, right, that's the new part.
That's the part that was changed, and that's what's called a permanent zone.
That is pertinent to C four. Otherwise, it has to follow the same regulations as C four does, which does not allow.
No, the C four, the C four portion is the minority on my property. It's just a few feet along the edge. The majority of my property is the C two.
Yeah, but that doesn't refer to the majority and minority. It refers to what was the original zoning before it was split.
Okay. What happened was when the wetland delineation was done twice, the delineation line was in the same spot, both delineations. Both lines it was delineated, it was in the same spot. So what that meant in English is, everything from the wetland delineation line going north is mismarked, it's miszoned. So it was a mapping error done back in the early seventies.
Now, I haven't seen any evidence about this.
It was, it's, my conversation was-
We're not going to rehash the rezon, it's zone C two right now. It's not all, it is split zone.
A pertinent to the C four.
What do you mean by pertinent?
It is subservient to C four. It has to follow the same-
Can you find, can you point it out in the book right here where it says that? I can't, because I've included this book hundreds of times, and I couldn't find it.
Sure, I can, give me a little time to go through and find it again.
All right.
Why don't we hold off on that bridge, and maybe you and I can discuss it, and I can show you a clarification. Maybe, why only?
Did we get a new delineation from the D N R?
No, it wasn't required because you got a letter from Allison Lee to the D N R, and she said as long as we're not doing any land disturbing, it's not necessary.
Well, she said as long as there are any future project, new future projects-
And there is not going to be any new future projects-
Well, this is a new future project because you're getting a conditional use. Right now, there is-
Okay, let me ask you, what are we building? I just said we're not going to build anything. Are we doing any land disturbing? I said we're not going to do any land disturbing. So we're not doing anything that would require it turning into a new project.
I think what you're saying, it's an already marina there.
Everything is there, we're not going to change a thing.
Yeah, and my point is, is that arena is not supposed to be there.
Is it a marina? Technically, it's not a marina because it doesn't have the right zoning, it doesn't have the right conditional use tied to it. That's what we're trying to correct, we're trying to correct the mapping error that happened fifty years ago.
Okay, well, that's not all I see, but that's okay. I understand what you're saying.
I think the main thing to take away from our meeting tonight is I do plan to adhere to all the rules in that zoning book. I do plan to adhere to all the federal, state, and local laws. So I'm not going outside or contrary to what is required of me by that book. So there's really no reason why it should not be granted a conditional use permit, as long as it follows-
Well, unless we can provide a reason to not, to not- Well, unless, unless we can provide, uh, a reason to not, to die that's based on evidence.
Yeah, based on evidence and contrary to that book, right?
We don't have to argue whether we're going to decide in, in favor of it or not, so, do you have anything else, Rich?
No, that's all.
All right, thank you. John, you have something else?
Yeah, so. In this, in, you want approval to put parking, the eight parking spots in the new C tubes.
Correct.
And in your mind, is that allowed as a, that, that, does it list that's a conditional use of C two?
As long as I was able to get Kate Hastings' signature on my application, which meant that we went over in great detail, I had five or six long meetings with her. And she said what you're doing there meets what's in the code book. So that's why she gave me her initial on my original application.
Well, you, you, they haven't approved a conditional use, it's just approval for.
It was approval for everything I was coming forward at the time, meets and, and is not going contrary to what's in the book.
But what I'm saying is, in, in order for the conditional use to be approved, parking would have to be a, a, an allowable conditional use of C two.
Correct, which it is.
I, I don't see that listed in there.
Well, she wouldn't have given me her signature on my application, because we went over this whole thing, the parking, great detail, you need so many feet radius in the back. We went over all that in great detail, and she wouldn't let me, she wouldn't sign off on this, because she's a senior planner at Walworth County. She wouldn't sign off on my application if I was trying to do something outside the box, greater than again.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, quick discussion on these commissioners, um. I guess, I, I don't, I, I don't, we're not going to make a decision on this tonight, I'm guessing we have some homework to do, um. I, I guess all I'm going to say, a conditional use is just that, if, you know, if, if he meets all those criteria. We can put whatever conditions, reasonable conditions on it, so I guess that's what I'm, kind of. That's, that's my take. Any other discussion before I leave the audience?